Good evening and welcome to the October 13, 2022 City Council Meeting of Longview, Texas. What a robust crowd we have tonight. Wonderful to have you all here. This should be a short meeting of a couple of hours. You shouldn't be here too long, so glad to have you all. Thanks for coming. Tonight, I'm kidding, it should be a short meeting. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by the representatives from Pine Tree ISD. Mickey White, Principal at Pine Tree Middle School will lead the prayer, and the Pine Tree High School Bucks Student Leadership Group will lead the pledge. So please rise.
Please bow with me. Heavenly Father, we just, we thank you for this amazing day that you've granted us here. And Lord, thank you for all the leaders and people from the city that have showed up today that care so much about what goes on here. We just ask for your blessings of patience and wisdom as we work through this meeting today, and we ask that you, that you grant your blessings on this great city as we go through our business today. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
[inaudible]
Well, a fine-looking group of young men. Thank you all for being here tonight, leading us in our pledge, and for Pine Tree ISD for being here to help with the prayer. Thank you all so much. We will start with employee recognition. I'll have a proclamation given during this employee recognition to code compliance. So I'll read it from here and it will come forward. Whereas, the American Association of Code Enforcement has requested the mayor by proclamation recognize October 14, 2022 as Code Compliance Day in the city of Longview. The role of code compliance officers has expanded in recent years as they work to enforce local codes and ordinances pertaining to issues of building, zoning, environmental compliance, safety in housing, including substandard and dangerous structures. Code compliance officers have a challenging and demanding role and often do not receive recognition for the hard work they do to improve living and working conditions for residents and businesses of our community. So I therefore, Andy Mack, by the authority vested in the mayor of the city of Longview, do proclaim October 14, 2022 as Code Compliance Day in Longview. Please come forward. And this is one hard-working group of people around here. Nobody wants this job. This is a hard, hard, tough, demanding job, but it is so necessary in our community. Without code compliance, things just go to pot. Things just go, there's no check and balance, and we need it so desperately in our city. So you all are so awesome. Thank you for what you do, the dedication you put towards your job, and the way that you do it. It's never a good day when code compliance comes to your door, but when you do it with a happy smile and you do it the way you all do, it's tolerable, and we appreciate it so much. Y'all keep up the good work. Y'all are such great representatives of the city of Longview, and I just, I love y'all. Thank y'all so much. Y'all the best. Thank y'all. Thank y'all so much. But so, y'all hold this. Come on up here. Forget all those good things I said about code compliance. Say mean, nasty people. Hey, so mean. Good grief. Okay. I have a few more proclamations here. We're going to start next with Pine Tree Independent School District. Okay. There's a bunch of y'all out here. I know Steve Fluxon's here. We're going to catch y'all up just a second. So Pine Tree Independent School District Day, October 13, 2022. Whereas, the mayor by proclamation recognizes October 13, 2022 as Pine Tree Independent School District Day in the city of Longview in recognition and celebration of their 175th anniversary. On October 10, 1847, Pine Tree School was established as part of the Pine Tree, Texas, and later incorporated into Longview in the 1870s. Starting off at just a small log cabin, the Pine Tree School grew to multiple brick buildings and campuses with the current enrollment of approximately 4,610 students. Being originally founded in 1847, Pine Tree ISD is in the top three oldest schools in the state of Texas and the 57th oldest public high school in America. So now therefore, Andy Mack, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview proclaim October 13, 2022 as Pine Tree Independent School District Day in Longview, Texas. Come on up, gang. Come on up, come on up. Good job, good job. Man, this is a good group. Come on, come on, come on up. Y'all gather round. Come on up. How are y'all? Good to see y'all. Come on. How you doing, sir? Great prayer. Come on. I got to shake everybody's hand. It's part of my job. Thank you, thank you, thank you all. Man, what a, what a great group. Pine Tree ISD is such a vital part of our community, and the history, the, the things that you all provide for Longview are immeasurable. So keep up the good work, keep educating our kids. It's the future of our country, of our city, of our state, of our everything. So education is such an essential part of what we do and how we proceed. But Pine Tree plays such a vital role in, in where we are in Longview, and I appreciate y'all so much. Appreciate the things that you do and the way that you do it. It shows, you know, not many, not many cities have multiple school districts within their city limits as we do, but we all harmonize, get along together, and we make each other better. And Pine Tree is a huge, huge part of that. So thank y'all for what you do. Keep up the good work, and I appreciate you very much. I also have two proclamations from J Dean, State of Texas. They're right there. Let me present those to you guys. So you can have all of these at one time. There's a lot of things to hold. So there you go. Let's get a good picture, and I want to thank y'all for what you do. Thank y'all so much. Next, we have a domestic violence awareness day proclamation. I'll read this, and I will have Megan Johnson, the Outreach Coordinator at Women's Center for Sex, come up and then receive this proclamation in just a second. So whereas, Women's Center for Sex has requested the mayor by proclamation recognize October 20, 2022 as domestic violence awareness day in the city of Longview. The crime of domestic violence violates individuals' privacy, dignity, security, and humanity. Women's Center for Sex is focused on ending violence, providing safe haven, Christ intervention, and comprehensive support services to victims. So therefore, I, Andy Mack, by authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview proclaim October 20, 2022 as domestic violence awareness day in Longview. Megan, come on forward. As Megan comes up, you know, this is one of those things we don't like to talk about because it makes us feel bad. But if you don't talk about it, you will never solve problems such as this. Megan, thank you. Thank you for what you guys do at the Women's Center. Y'all are awesome. It's a, it's a tough job. It's a job that has such heart into it, but y'all do it with such grace and beauty, and I thank you for the sacrifice that you all make because it makes a difference to those that are in need, and there are certainly needs in our community that y'all are meeting. Thank you so much. Keep up the good work. Appreciate it. We have one more. Fire Prevention Week. Oh, excellent. Okay. So whereas, the Longview Fire Department has requested that mayor by proclamation recognize October 9 to the 15, 2022 as Fire Prevention Week in the city of Longview. Our city's first responders have, have reduced fire-related occurrences through prevention and protection, education, and this year's theme is Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape. Know at least two ways out of every room, if possible. Make a home escape plan and discuss with everyone in your home. Teach children how to escape on their own in case you aren't able to help them. So now I therefore, Andy Mack, by authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview proclaim October 9 to 15, 2022 as Fire Prevention Week in Longview. Fire Department, come on up. Come on. All right, guys. Thank you, guys. Thank y'all. Thank you, Bob. Thanks, Peggy. Thank y'all. How are you? Thank y'all. Come on up. Come on up. Thanks, chief. You know, you would, here's, Sparky, hold that. You got it. You know, you would think it would go without saying how important it is to have a fire prevention plan in your home, but unless you make an effort to do it, you don't have one. And when you need one, you don't have it, it's the last thing in the world you want to have happen. So, you know, take this to heart. Knowledge is, is, is so powerful, and if you could just teach your kids and show them a way out, especially if you happen not to be there for some reason, it, it, it'll change a life or save a life. And so Fire Prevention Week is important. We need the education, we need the thoughts that y'all put into it, all the time y'all put into the community. It's greatly appreciated. Keep up the good work. You're saving lives every day, gang. Thank y'all so much. Okay, we are to citizen comment. I do not have any speaker cards. We'll move on to public safety update. We'll start with Chief Boone.
Mr. Mayor, council members, this is Hagan Bueker. Technical difficulties, but we'll start here in just a second. We do have several things to talk about from events we've had over the last couple of weeks. We'll start off with on Saturday, October 1st, Touch a Truck that is sponsored by Longview Community Ministries. We've had this event at, at the exhibit center before, and it was at the mall, very successful. Quite a few families, kids out there having a good time. We gave away quite a few stickers and some shirts, and as you can see, everyone enjoyed playing with the lights, and I think the golf cart was the most popular one out there, even over the, the Bearcat. We also, on October 4th, had our National Night Out event. We had 85 parties total, and we were very, very impressed with that number. And we want to thank everybody that participated in that, and we hope to have next year's event even bigger. And then also, this past Friday, we had students, I believe they're third graders, from our Clarence Bailey Elementary School with the LSD come out, and they toured the PD and also looked at our, some of our equipment that we had. So we're, we're trying to recruit them while they're young, so we'll have some new recruits when they get a little older. Also, even though summer's over, Pump the Brakes has not ended. That does continue, and I do want to share some quick stats from this past summer. From May 1st through August 31st, you'll see that on enforcement, we had an uptick of about 30% compared to last year, and then also, our crashes are down about 12% compared to last year. From May through August 31st, we had 847 in 2021, and we're at 751 for 2022. Also, I want to let you know that Officer Solomon has, through his surgery, and he is recovering, so we're very happy about that. And finally, I do want to share to our public, despite what you've seen in, in today about one former PD employee, this agency is committed to being the premier agency in East Texas and providing professional policing to our community. And if you share in this vision, I encourage you to still support your police department and be a member of our team. So thank you very much, and do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Chief Boone? Thank you, sir. Chief Steelman?
Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council. This is Hagan Bueker. It's a pleasure to be here and back in front of you to update you on some activities of the Fire Department since our last council meeting. Back in September, we had the opportunity to participate with the nursing class at La Terna University as they conducted a mass casualty exercise out on their campus. And EMS is certainly going to be a big part of any type of a crisis like this, and nurses are going to be at the focal point of EMS delivering those patients to medical facilities to continue that care. It was a great time. It was a great exercise. They really planned it well, and I appreciate them letting us come out and be a part of it. We hope these days never happen in our community, but it's good to know that we have the, the trained, qualified people out there to lean on on the days that it might. And I really missed out on this one, but I want to thank Neil McCoy for inviting us to participate in his pledge of allegiance that he does. He was connecting this with the, the East Texas Angel Network. They had an event out at Papa Sita's where they got to use our ladder truck as, as a flag mask to fly our big American flag to do one of his pledge allegiance. And fortunately for our crew, the Dallas Cowboy Cheerleaders were on hand, and I put a little nut on there, and my phone never rang. I never got a call on this, so I'll be looking into that, and I'll be visiting with this crew and make sure that times like that, it's a priority that my phone needs to ring. So I just, I missed out on that one all the way around.
Mine didn't ring either, chief.
I know. Chief Boone already covered it, but National Night Out was a hit. We had a great time. I think all of our stations dumped out. They were all out in the community, participating in parties. I tried to make, I always plan to try to make, I don't know, eight or 10, and I might, I might make six or seven, four or five, you know, just because you get stopped and you start talking to people, and everybody's cramming a plate at you, and you just don't want to leave. It's such a great time. It's a great night in our city just to mix with people and to hear them and what's going on, and let them give us feedback about the job we're doing. It's just a good, feel-good moment, and I appreciate all the, all the parties that I got to stop at. I certainly, I don't think I ate anything the whole next day because I ate some really good food out there that night. But it was a great time. We're already looking forward to next year. Our Stop the Bleed classes are continuing. We had the opportunity earlier this week to provide a class for the CASA group. If your business or agency or anything is interested in hosting this life-saving training, I've got a slide coming up on it. We do have another offering coming up next month. I'll get to that in just a second. But these are free courses, and the knowledge you gain might save somebody's life down the road. I had the opportunity on Tuesday this week to go out with some junior high students at the Trinity School of Texas. They were looking for a community service project, and their coordinator, Mrs. Pittinger, reached out to me and asked me if I had any ideas, and I said, well, you know what? We have about 4,000 fire hydrants in the city, and I guarantee you, we can find some that need to be painted. And they embraced the opportunity. We went out. It was a nice, cool morning on Tuesday. If you're driving through the area between East Marshall Avenue and Whaley Street, all the way down to American Legion, back to Fourth Street, pay attention to the job that these young ladies did. The hydrants pop. I mean, you can't help but miss them. And it was funny talking to these young ladies. They, you know, they're like, well, these have been here for a long time, and we've never paid attention to them, and I guarantee you, they'll pay attention to them from now on. And, and just driving through and noticing the ones that are freshly painted versus the ones that aren't. And where this is a big deal for us is when you're out responding to a structure fire, a building fire, at 2:00 in the morning, and you're trying to remember where that hydrant might be, when you hit it with those headlights, and that yellow just stands out, you know right where to go to get the water you need to fight that fire. So it's a, it's a great community service, and it really helps the Fire Department out immensely. So we thank them for that. We had a great donation today of 8,000-plus bottles of drinking water from our McCoy store here in town. Mr. Carpenter was a big hand in that, and, and I can't believe what that means to the Fire Department. You know, you can imagine the job that we do, the environments that we go in, the temperatures that we face, even though it's starting to cool down, that 700 or 800-degree structure fire hadn't cooled down any. So going in and doing that job and coming out, there's nothing better than getting a nice cold bottle of water to, to kind of fill your tank back up. So we thank McCoy's for that. It's great to have such awesome community partners that are always looking out to lend a hand. So thank you. As I mentioned earlier, our Next Stop the Bleed class is coming up on November the 14th, 6:00 PM. If you're interested, you can pre-register there at the website that's on the slide, or you can reach out to our EMS section, and they will get you hooked up. Another billboard that we're going to run for the next three months is our ambulance subscription program is now open for people that are interested in signing up for that. This is a great, it's, it's a great program in the city. If you need to take an ambulance ride and you pay your $70 membership fee, if you meet some other qualifying criteria, that's the only out-of-pocket expense that you might incur. So I encourage everybody to look into that and see if you're qualified. As Chief Boone mentioned about hiring, yes, the Fire Department is hiring as well. So we're looking for qualified people that are interested in an awesome career in the fire service, being a part of this community, and helping people out in their most desperate time of need. It's a very rewarding career. We've got openings right now. Then certainly give us a look if that's something you think you might want to do. And this last little thing, Mayor, if you indulge me, I'm going to take just a minute. And I highlighted this in a previous council update, but back in September, just a month ago, we had a structure fire out on the north side of town on Row Avenue. And at the end of that fire, and you can imagine, this was back September, it's still really warm, that our guys were kind of beat down, and there was a little guy that just showed up in the neighborhood there and kind of watched the firemen doing all their activities and their work. And at the end of that, I think he approached to say, hey, he wanted to lend a hand, and he was certainly welcome to come on in, and he helped roll some hose. He got a little experience there handling the fire hose and spraying some water out of it, and just really made an impression on the crews out there. So with your permission, we would like to, he's here in the room tonight. We'd like to ask Spencer to come up. We'd like to make him an honorary member of the Longview Fire Department. I'm going to get the rest of the crew to come up here. We're going to do some high-fiving in a minute. So Spencer, man, you did a great job, and we want to recognize that. We got a few things to give you here so you can remember that day that you stepped up and helped out the Fire Department. So, and I'll put all this back in the sack because it's a handful, but we got you a cap. We got you a little trophy that says you're an honorary firefighter with a firefighter on it. We got you a Longview Fire Department t-shirt, so we're about to get you outfitted. You've already got your turnout gear, and we've got a challenge coin for you. And this is pretty special in the Fire Department. When you get one of these, it means you've done something good above and beyond. So I'm happy to give this to you. I'd like to shake your hand, and thank you for helping out our guys that day, man. Look us up in a few years. I'll put all this back in there for you. Oh, yeah. All right. So you want to go down front and get a picture? All right, we're going to take a picture. Come on, guys.
If the family would like to take a picture, man, y'all are more than welcome to take a picture if y'all want to come up here and take a picture as a family. Bring your family up here, Spencer.
Yeah.
Come on up. Chief, you get with him, okay? Bring him on up. That's pretty special.
Thank you, little fireman. We appreciate your service.
That's fantastic. Thank y'all.
Mayor, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Chief Steelman?
Yes, sir.
Did you get his application?
It was in the sack.
Any other questions? Thank you, chief. We're now at Consent Agenda. Any items council might pull off for separate discussion?
Mayor, I'd like S and W.
G and J.
Excuse me, one second. One at a time.
Oh, S and W.
S and W.
G and J.
Say it again?
G and J.
G and J. Okay, we'll start with you, Mr. Carpenter.
Item, let's start with W. And this is probably a pretty simple, but it wasn't laid out. Is this a, a bond issue paid?
It is part of the bond issue.
Is it part of the bond, or is it part of the budget?
It is. It's part of that public safety bond issue.
Thank you. It's part of the...
Right, part of that. Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. Adam, S. I mean, excuse me. Did I say G? What did I say? G and J?
You said S and W.
Hi, Dr. My question is twofold. The first question is, it's on the consent agenda with the reference to pages 79 and 82. If you roll over to 79 and 82, it gives a grand total of what we're asking for, but there's 28 projects, and I don't see a listing of the 28 other than what I saw in the paper. Can you spell that out for us?
It should be Exhibit A.
Right. It's just right here.
Thank you. It wasn't in the pack.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Now we'll go to G.
What are the Ford Explorers, what department are they going to?
It's going to be in Police Department.
Police Department?
Yes, sir.
So that's part of the deal where we have to buy certain equipment from that because of the, the way they're rigged up?
Yeah, we, we're having these rigged up, so, yes.
And I guess it would be the same thing for, for J. Is that a similar situation?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and they're going to Police Department, too?
Yep, yes, sir. Both of them are.
There's no other questions. Is there a motion?
Tell me.
We have motion of second on the favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We are now to zoning. Public hearing held to consider annexation of approximately 46.5 acres. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mrs. Hagan Bueker. Staff has received a request from a property owner for annexation of approximately 46.785 acres of land located within the ETJ in Harrison County, located on the south side, a smelly road east of Alpine Road. Currently, the property is vacant. However, the applicant would like to develop a 73-lot, single-family subdivision. The applicant will tie on to city services, including city water and city sewer. A small portion of this property is located within Gum Springs Water Supply Corporation. Gum Springs Water Supply Corporation will need to relinquish this area prior to service by the city of Longview. The owner will be responsible for amending the CCN boundaries through the Public Utility Commission, and will bear the cost of that boundary amendment. All basic services such as sanitation, police, fire, EMS will be provided at the date of annexation. This item does require a public hearing by the local government code. Once the public hearing is held, the next item on the agenda is for city council to consider an ordinance annexing the property. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions? Ms. Choi. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a motion of second. I would make note that I will recuse myself on this item for possible personal reasons. I'm not assured, and I'm going to recuse myself from voting on this item. So please, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion carries. Any opposed? The motion carries with my, no vote on my part. Thank you.
And then the next item on the agenda is to consider an ordinance annexing the previous request. So I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of Ms. Choi?
Move for approval.
There's a second? Motion of second? I will excuse myself on this as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We will now go to the public hearing, consider application, annexation of eighty-four point nine acres. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. Staff has received a request from the current property owners to annex approximately eighty-six acres of land located within the city's ETJ in Harrison County, located along Neiman Marcus Parkway and east of Big Oak Boulevard. Currently, there is a vacant building on one of the properties that was previously occupied by Neiman Marcus. All other properties are vacant. This item does require a public hearing required by the Texas Local Government Code. Once this public hearing is held, the next item on the agenda is for city council to consider an ordinance annexing this property. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Any questions of Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll have a motion to consider the annexation. Is there a motion? Motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public hearing, application Z-22-20. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a rezone of property, and this is tied to the previous annexation request on Smelly Road. When annexation does occur, the property is automatically assigned an agricultural zoning designation. The applicant would like to develop land for a residential subdivision, a seventy-three lot residential subdivision. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions of Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
There's a second? Motion of second. I will not vote on this again. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public hearing, application S-22-08.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for an existing one-family dwelling in heavy commercial zoning district. A specific use permit is required for a one-family dwelling in heavy commercial zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions of Ms. Choi on this? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing, consider application HL-22-01. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack. The applicant is requesting a local landmark designation for the Longview National Bank. If approved, this will be Longview's eleventh local landmark. This building is located in downtown and is addressed as 213 North Fredonia Street, south of Gregg County Courthouse. Originally, there was a two-story structure seen here in this picture that was built in nineteen forty with an Art Modern facade, which is currently actually there. When the building was expanded upon in nineteen fifty-eight by B.W. Crane, they actually enveloped that building and built a, and included a basement and a two-story garage with a drive-through banking corridor. Longview National Bank has characteristics of the modern movement, which was a period from World War I through nineteen seventy. One of the featured traits of this movement is the use of minimal ornamental application. The building, the current building, has a exterior facade that is made out of white Alabama marble and gray granite panels with concealed parking lot on the north side facing Methvin Street. Longview native B.W. Crane Jr. of the noted architectural firm, Wilson Morris Crane &amp; Anderson, designed this building, along with many other buildings throughout Longview, Texas. In addition to this building, he did, he and his firm also contributed to the petroleum building, Trinity Episcopal Church, as well as First Baptist Church, as well, and also with, to note, the Astrodome in Houston, and was very influential in the Frank Irwin Center at the University of Texas. Local landmarks must meet the criteria listed in our Unified Development Code for designation, and this building meets many of the criteria. The Historic Preservation Commission, along with Planning and Zoning Commission, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions of Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion of second?
Second.
Motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you. We are now to items of community interest. Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mayor. We have about three or four. Let's see if we get the... All right, food for fines is going up again. One canned or boxed food for one dollar in fines cleared, November the first through the twentieth. So those of you without parking tickets amongst other things, you can take advantage of this, of this program, November the first through the twentieth. Community interest, there's been some discussion, Mayor, as far as the UDC, which is the buzzword for the Unified Development Code. This council adopted in late twenty-twenty, it went in in twenty-twenty-one, and since that time, the staff has compiled a list of needed revisions that will be brought back before our council soon. We've got a really good UDC from a standpoint of, we started with codes in about forty different places and they're now under one umbrella. The revisions will include some minor topographical errors that were sent to the consultant but were not put in on the final draft, as well as some significant changes that will be identified through the feedback that we're getting from the city's development community. One of the major items that will be addressed is a UDC requirement to construct sidewalks as part of development projects. We received some questions about the process, and the staff is looking at possible alternatives that will still promote walkability in our community. In other words, we're trying to eliminate the sidewalks to nowhere. Currently, the city staff tends to review the needed changes during the remainder of this year, bring the proposed revisions to the Construction Advisory and Appeals Board, and the Planning and Zoning Commission in February, with the final revisions back to this council in March of twenty-three. Very, very good thing, and I really appreciate the work that Development Services is putting in on this, trying to get some of this stuff resolved. Okay, last but not least, or somewhere on the list, I know that I'm not the only one up here who's had their phone rang off the wall, receiving questions about the work being done on McCann Road over the walking trail. The bridge deck was constructed by the contractors a bit higher than it was designed, so the city, the designers, the Texas Department of Transportation are working to determine the best plan to resolve the issue. The city staff met with TechDOT this week to provide a possible solution for review. Councilman Pertle attended the meeting. The city is awaiting TechDOT's approval on the plan so that the contractor can address the concerns and finish out the project. The other bridge work at Judson Road still has a few items that are part of the final punch list for the contractor before the trail project is finished. However, staff is working with that contractor to ensure that everything is completed. However, right now, everyone's focus is the completion of McCann Road. And Mayor, I just got to give some, some kudos out to our team. When we get something that's identified in the city, we've got some of the best people that I've ever worked with trying to get resolution and try to figure out what to do. And may not always go the way we thought it would, but at least we've, we've certainly dealt with it. So, Food Bank at Gregton again, will be next Thursday, I believe it is. There are still up over two-hundred-and-fifty families or thereabouts. And that is all, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Snotty.
Good evening, everyone. Little League Flat Football is in full swing at Stafford Park. The participants, as well as the fans, are really enjoying the renovations, so they're having a good time out there on Saturday. Okay, Partners in Prevention Unity Diversity Committee presents Longview Listens. Guest speaker is Rory Stein. He is the former bodyguard to Nelson Mandela. He will speak on unity and forgiveness to all on Thursday, November 3rd, at 6:00 PM at the MOCOP Convention Center. Great. Nets Broad and Recreation Center has been a tremendous asset for the city of Longview for over forty years. The building and park have been under construction for a little over a year and are nearing completion. We're excited to make the finishing touches on the interior over the next month and open for our residents to enjoy. So there's just a sneak preview. Guys, I got a chance to go in there, and words can't describe. It is an amazing, amazing facility. So, the community, as well as the entire city, should be very proud of this. Also, one other thing, National Night Out, FYI, council, if you're going to go to National Night Out, go with your par officer. Guarantee to make at least eight to ten parties and enjoy every last one of them. Thank you, Officer LaDarian Brown. I rode with him, and I had a great, great time. So, thank you.
Mr. Wade is not here. Can we have a motion to excuse Mr. Wade tonight, please?
Please, excuse.
Well, motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mrs. Yehara.
Just one from me. Just wanted to invite folks to the Halloween carnival that takes place at the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center. It is Saturday, October 29th, from 2:00 till 4:00. If you've been before, you know it's a trunk-or-treat and carnival with games. This year, though, they are sticking with the Stranger Things theme, so it is called the Upside Down Walk-Around Featuring Shelter Things. And you know that they can decorate and have a good time over there, so please come out and join us. Bring your dog wearing a costume and come for a good time.
Very good. Ms. Campbell.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank everyone who came out to the Parks Meeting, and thank you to everyone for their hospitality at National Night Out. It was great getting to know so many people in District Five. Coming up next, Monday, October 24th, at 6:00 PM at the Spring Hill High School Library. We will be having our town meeting, so I hope to see all of you there. This last weekend, myself, Councilman Ray Wade, Scott Karen from Parks, Assistant Manager Marion Hagen-Bueker, and Ms. Ingrid Self went to TML. We got to see other leaders from around the state, as well as learn more about what we can do to impact our community. This morning, where we just got back from, I got to moderate the Leadership Longview Economic Development Day. Thank you to Wayne Mansfield from Leadco, Judge Stout, Ms. Mary Ann, for participating in the panel, and Ms. Kelly Belt, and everybody else who puts Leadership Longview together. I think that the class had a great time learning about what we do in the city. Thank you, Mayor Mack, for granting my request to make October 8th Martin House Day in the city of Longview. Martin House is a nonprofit organization that helps serve abused and neglected children who've experienced trauma or sexual abuse, so thank you so much for that. No, it really meant a lot to them. And I got to take a picture with the pay setters. So exciting. And as you know, council gets two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month, so I give my stipend half and half, one to Martin House and the other half to CASA. And coming up, October 18th, 2022, at 6:00 PM, congratulations to Andrea Perez and Caitlin Dark for their Girl Scouts Silver Award reveal. So if you can, please mark that on your calendar. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you. Ms. Pertle?
Nothing from me.
Ms. Hagen-Bueker. Okay, the haunted library, the Longview Public Library, has been transformed into a haunted house. Join us from 6:00 to 9:00 PM on October 14th to 15th for a frightfully good time. I'm sure Ms. Laura has that in great position. Sow a Seed Sunday. Keep Longview Beautiful will host their second annual Sow a Seed Sunday at The Green on Sunday, October 30th. Please come out and join them and sow some seeds. Our October 27th council meeting has been canceled. Our next meeting will be held at 5:30 PM on November the 10th, which is a Thursday. So we hope to see you again then, and until then, thank you all for being here tonight. Be safe and God bless. We adjourn.